Long, long time ago there wasn't this panel.
I'd call a bird city council meeting to order if we could please rise and join our pleasure meetings. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Your call.
Councilmember Carter. I'm here. Councilmember Davis.
I'm green and I'm here.
Councilmember Hefford.
I'm here.
And Mayor Protemp Rosales is absent, and Mayor Kendrick.
Here. For those that are sitting at home and watching this on their computer screen, we appreciate greatly, one, you watching it, and two, that you are staying away. We are in a serious situation with the coronavirus. In fact, we're going to have a presentation shortly by our hospital expert that will provide us with information that probably we haven't received yet. So, thank you for staying away, but thank you for staying engaged. At this time, I would like to introduce a friend, Anna LaVern resident. She's the vice president of administration at the hospital, Lee Cornell. Lee?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that introduction and hello to all. I am here tonight as a proud resident of LaVern, but as my capacity as administrator at Pomona Valley Hospital Medical Center, it is my privilege to introduce somebody that I've been spending a lot of time with of late, but he is definitely an expert in this field and has really given us a sense of calm and allowed us an opportunity to get greatly prepared. So it is my privilege truly to introduce Dr. Dan Gluckstein. He is the medical director of infectious disease at Pomona Valley Hospital Medical Center, and we have been doing a lot of work to help prepare, to make sure everybody feels confident in our ability to serve in this capacity in very unprecedented times, correct? But truly, I think you're going to enjoy his presentation. I've seen it a few times, and I always take away something of great importance and significance. So, without further ado, if I can introduce Dr. Dan Gluckstein.
Thank you, Lee.
And before you do that, Mr. Mayor, I would like to point out that we have put an aseptic wipe, I think they're on the shelf below, if anybody wants to make use of it. In the shelf for a lot of podiums, or the microphone for the event of other speakers. So, those are there.
Okay, thank you. Hand hygiene and disinfection is my second love. I'm glad to be here with you and certainly want to share some information. There's tons of stuff, obviously, coming faster than you can keep up with in my profession. And getting accurate information and understanding where things are and where things will be as we move forward is critical to what you need to do as a community, in a city, and as all of us need to deal with things that are changing every day. Certainly, as I reflect back, looking back to last week, as of a week ago, nobody was thinking about school closures, and then a few districts closed schools, and by the end of the week, people were wondering, why isn't my district closing? And clearly now, we've accelerated even over the weekend and today with lockdowns, quote, of cities within California and around the country as they confront this problem. And I want to give you a little better understanding in particular about sort of the dynamics of the process rather than just, oh, here's a case, there's a case, now there's two, and what's underlying, what's going on in all of our communities in the nation at somewhat different speeds. Again, I'm the medical director of infectious disease at Pomona Valley. I've been there since 1988, and this is certainly the most challenging infection prevention and control outbreak we've ever had to deal with, and certainly matches if not is a bigger threat than when we dealt with the H1N1 virus in 2009. So I have sort of a set of slides. I've been giving various, some of this talk to various groups at the hospital and within the community of the area, so some of these may not be relevant, but I'll just sort of skip through. This is just sort of an epidemic curve of what happened early on in Wuhan, China, a city again of about 12 million people, so really similar in size to Los Angeles plus. And you can see sort of over to the left, they actually started to recognize some cases of an unknown disease really early on in December, and almost certainly they've been going on for at least several weeks before, closely associated with this open air market where a lot of different animal products were sold, as well as a number of other things, seafood. And clearly, this is where this probably started. There were sort of individual cases popping up, as I think you've all heard about the physician who said, something's going on, and was not recognized as seeing that there's a problem in the community that needs to be dealt with for a few weeks. But by the end of December, the sort of phase of denial that there's a problem was overridden, and very quickly, the Chinese equivalent of our CDC started to investigate. Within a week of recognizing the problem, they actually identified this new virus that hadn't been known to infect humans before, and then within another week had a test for it. I mean, that is amazing science. I remember back when I was in training and HIV/AIDS had just been recognized as a disease. It took us over three years to recognize the virus and another year to have a test, and this was all accomplished in two weeks. However, because cases were now, instead of being a common source in the market, were now spreading person to person within the larger community of a very large city that's also a transportation hub for eastern China, they saw very quick increases in cases in the blue, and sort of that's when the cases were first recognized by symptoms, but then there was a delay in needing testing and/or other diagnosis requirements in hand. They did a number of restrictions, particularly on travel, isolating people at home, separating sick people from other members of their family, closing businesses, what we're calling social distancing very intensively early on, got very high rates of compliance, and you can see they had sharp drop-offs in the cases in blue by even the middle of February. So this disease now, there's been lots of published studies on this, and sorting out some of the finer details, but it has an incubation period from when somebody's exposed to can potentially develop symptoms of somewhere around five to six days, but sometimes up to two weeks, or in rare cases even over three weeks. It's mainly spread by these respiratory droplets, somewhat large, larger particles when you cough or sneeze, that are up in the air for just briefly and then settle to the ground, but can easily transmit three to six feet if you greet them in, or get them in your face, or touch something that still has these moist droplets. This reproductive number, meaning one person with the disease, how many people do we infect, is generally around two to three without other interventions. And most studies, without a lot of social distancing or some sort of barriers like masks and intensive hand hygiene, and somewhere around two and a half people get the disease from one person. And again, those people then give it to another two and a half or so, and that's where you get this exponential growth, that one person can become two, or eight, sixteen, thirty-two, and then very quickly into the thousands over a month and a half or so. You can lower that by barriers to transmission like social distancing and hygiene and masks. The other concerning item is that clearly there can be asymptomatic transmission before people have symptoms, and potentially we don't have it sorted out yet, but in younger adults and children, that may be where a lot of the initial spread happens, but as well it can happen with adults. Just where this disease is compared to other diseases, this is a graph of mortality on the vertical axis, and at the bottom, it's not to scale, so it jumps up fairly quickly. And on the other axis horizontally, what this R zero is, how many people get infected without some sort of intervention. So you can see over to the right measles, the average person with measles with an unvaccinated population can infect somewhere around nine or 10 people, so it can spread very quickly. This virus is sort of over to the left, and again, about two, two and a half for how many people get infected, with the mortality rate of somewhere around 1%, and that depends on how much you look for viral cases and how well the healthcare system can take care of very sick people. So it's not nearly as bad as the bird flu or its relatives, like the SARS virus, the MERS virus that we saw earlier in this century, but it clearly is worse than our usual seasonal flu by a factor somewhere about 10 times as likely for people to die at about 1% or so. And so it's in this area where it has a fairly long incubation period, spreads fairly readily, and can make a fairly large number of people, if enough people get sick, suffer from death or serious illness. So the symptoms are fairly nonspecific as well. We all get colds, and we all have some fevers that are usually mild with this disease, and a dry cough. It's nothing different than what you might go to the doctor and be told you have bronchitis, but nothing super dramatic. It's not, you're fine, severe chills, fever of 104, severe muscle aches that get typically with more influenza. It seems more like just a chest cold, and that's part of the problem with this disease as well. I won't show you this, but the lab findings are not very typical to say something is really wrong as well. They're pretty normal in most people, and it may take something like CT scans to show abnormalities in the lungs as well. People can be sick for the first week and then they're getting better, but the people tend to progress to more severe disease and need hospitalization. It happens more in the second week of illness also. This is what's really disturbing again about a lot of the data we've gotten out of China in the last really month and a half, based on their experience now over two months, is that the mortality in people of 80 years and above is about 15%. This may change a bit because if you don't find very mild cases, if you really, by not testing them, you may miss people who have less severe disease, and that may lower the mortality, and then 70 to 80 or so, 8%, and it drops off pretty dramatically. So by under 40, it tends to not cause very serious illness in very many people, but obviously, if thousands and thousands of people get it within any age group, there will be some hospitalizations and some deaths, but particularly in young children under the age of 10, it really seems to be a benign disease from the point of view of their health, but whether they can serve to transmit it. The other problem is other serious diseases, heart disease, hardened artery arteries, people with strokes or diabetes, or chronic lung disease also have increased mortality. So there's an interaction between both age and pre-existing conditions that makes people much more likely to seriously overdie from this. And I think you've all heard now about this unfortunate situation in this nursing home in Kerfpool, Washington, in the Seattle area. We have nursing homes throughout our community, some of which are higher acuity, that have patients on breathing machines, ventilators. This was not one of those facilities. They have 120 residents. Beginning a little over three weeks ago, they started to notice people were going to the hospital with sort of a cold bronchitis, shortness of breath syndrome. So now, they have been putting out press releases every day, which is certainly a worrisome sign for a nursing home. But 66 people have been hospitalized and 24 diabetes from this facility. 26 of them have died at this point, whereas usually they have about three to seven tests per month at this facility, so a dramatic increase. Died 15 in the hospital and 11 at the facility because they were on instructions not to trench or the hospital, they got sick. Testing isn't done on everybody yet, some people died before they got tested, but 67 had been confirmed positive, only 12 had been confirmed negative out of those 120. Not all of them needed testing. So clearly, a very bad disease that spread relatively easily in this facility. They have 180 employees. As of looking at the report today, 102 of the employees have symptoms as far as cough, fever over the last several weeks. Testing has been slowly coming back on them, 46 are positive, 24 negative, and at least another 24, and it doesn't add up to 102, so there's still missing a few people. So clearly, a lot of employees were sick, a lot of patients got sick, and the patients pay the price with severe illness or death at a very high rate. And clearly, I know you have facilities in the community, and certainly at Pomona and Claremont in our region, we have a fairly elderly population, and this is a huge concern with the drive to say, what can we do to prevent these situations? Overall, what we know, and we're looking at sort of what happens with disease in the population, about 80% as best we know, and maybe undercounting mild cases or asymptomatic cases, are not sick enough to need really any healthcare, but may have a mild fever and a cough for about a week, and then it fades out. There are clearly cases that have almost no symptoms, but may still be shedding the virus. About 20% are going to need some sort of hospital medical care, and generally about 5% may be an intensive care unit, potentially with life support, and somewhere between 1% to 3%, 4% may die from this disease. Usually, if they're going to die after being on ventilator or breathing machine support, it may take several weeks later, so there's always a lag between number of cases and then subsequent deaths that really refers back potentially several weeks. So the deaths tend to track a little later than the actual cases as far as increasing. We now have some possibilities for some medical treatment with a drug, so we're trying to work on that. Just to give you an idea of the testing issues, because this is the huge problem in the United States, that we were late getting tests out, and then there were problems with the tests. So we've been really behind by at least a month to a month and a half on being able to test people in the hospital, let alone in the community at large, even with symptoms. So number of tests per million people, if you can see, Bahrain has done huge numbers, over 6,000 per million people, South Korea close behind at almost 5,000, and the United States is hard to find, but it's down, let's see, fourth up from the bottom at, as of, let's see, three days ago now, at 24 per million people. So this is why our numbers that we're reporting now as far as confirmed cases are clearly grossly undercounting what's out there in the real world. We've been, because of the shortage of testing materials and inability of private labs or individual hospitals to do testing until CDC and FDA said, a week ago Friday, we could start to develop tests. We've been dependent on sending it to LA County, and they have had quite strict definitions because of their ability to handle this test, and it's a fairly laboring test that the US has rolled out through the CDC processes compared to the World Health Organization testing. So we have to sort of go through this checklist, call LA County, get approval for us to send the test to them, and then just beginning, as past Monday, we could send it to Quest, a commercial lab. The first week, last week, we were allotted 20 tests per month for the hospital. They, as of today, said now we're up to being able to process somewhere around 60 tests a month for you. We are nowhere near, what we would like to do is test every patient with a cough, and certainly a lot of patients that come to the ER, let alone now patients. I know there's now a federal program, and when that will be actually functional is a little unclear, but ideally within a few weeks through retail pharmacy, parking lot, groups, something like that. We were trying to get an in-house system to be able to test and get a result, whether a few hours, currently it takes about two days to get a result, sending it either to LA County or to the Quest lab. And obviously, as demand picks up, if they can't keep up with the demand, that may then back up even several more days.
Doctor, if I may.
Yeah.
You were saying they're up to 60 a month for you guys.
Right.
Give me a comparison. What, you were saying you'd like to have a test everybody coming in, what would that number be approximately?
That would be, you know, our hospital is 400 beds, and, you know, as it comes up, goes up in the next few weeks, we're probably looking at, you know, easily 20 a day to, you know, in the next several weeks to a month, certainly 50 a day.
So close to 7, 800 for...
Right, yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to get a comparison.
Words of magnitude too small.
Yeah, yeah, right, right, thank you.
Now, their general expectation is, they, you know, they were 20 last week, 60 this week, if it's, you know, 500 by next week, and the turnaround is even better, would be ideal, and if we can do it in-house.
Just LA, or Pomona Valley is the busiest emergency room in Southern California. It's 100,000 patients a year, so you start to mark that by 12.
Right.
Compared to 2 a day right now, we're pretty...
Right, and we've seen, just in the last few weeks, this has been recognized, and when we had our first case, let's see now, a little over a week ago, ER volume has actually gone down, but there's an effect of, I don't want to go unless I'm really sick, which may be ideally a good thing. Clearly, our doctors in the community and outside clinics have been saying, we want to be able to test people who are calling us up, and we have an allotment for, through our system of affiliated clinics, of 10 tests per month, you know, but that clearly won't work for...
Doctor, is it the fact that also the test kits aren't available, but also just the facilities to test the test kits are available?
Yeah, well, there's two, I mean, the private labs, so both within our own hospital that we're purchasing, purchasing a commercial system, and then Quest or LabCorp have their own in-system developed, but it takes a while to ramp up what's available. The CDC kit that was then pushed out to the public health laboratories, there are, my understanding is there are plenty of kits, it's a fairly labor-intensive kit, some of the tests and some of the things we do routinely, like for influenza, and it's like a little printer cartridge, you just put the swab and collect from the patient in the cartridge, add some reagent, put it in the machine, and an hour later you have the result. As far as actual lab tech time, it's very minimal. It takes more time to collect the specimen and get the labor and labeling and get it into the medical record than it does to actually have a tech, whereas the CDC test is a much more hands-on test over several hours. So that's also hard to back up. There just isn't enough lab capacity at the public health lab level with that type of kit to process thousands and thousands a day.
Thank you.
So what we are left with, because we're clearly going to have a lot more cases, is trying to not have that two and a half or so reproductive number hit us all at once and infect somewhere around 10, 20, 30% of the population in the next month. We want to try to avoid each person from infecting two people, so we can put it down in the blue line. The number of cases under each curve would be the same, but if you spread it out over three to six months, you don't exceed the capacity of the health system with ventilators, with ICU beds, with hospital beds, with emergency room space, because if we get above that blue line with a huge crush of very sick patients, we will not be able to take care of them, and even with emergency supplies through the federal and state government for this kind of pandemic, because we would not have enough equipment. And clearly, as it becomes more common in the community, we're very concerned about, do we have enough nurses, doctors, and lab technicians to handle that kind of surge? And it would be, you know, very similar to what we're seeing with water supply and toilet paper in the grocery stores, but certainly this would affect our ability to take care of these patients, and as well the patients with trauma, or stroke, or other medical emergencies coming into the hospital, because we just don't have enough ability to handle that many patients. This gives you an idea, country by country, what's going on, and it's a little bit of a complicated graph, but I think it's really illuminating, because on the left side is a number of cases cumulatively, and it's a logarithmic scale, so you can see, starting from when the individual country had 100 measured cases. And then on the side is the number of days since they had 100 measured cases. So you can see the US is the red line sort of right in the middle, there's a line, the dash line is 33% daily increase in number of cases. That's a huge increase. You can see that the vast majority of countries dealing with this disease have been at that line or a little bit above. That's a really extraordinary increase, and that's what would give a very sharp, large peak over a relatively short period of time of a few months, and that's what was happening in China in that upslope. And so you can see China up at the top has had the most cases of any single country, but with the implementation of extreme social distancing, building hospital healthcare capacity, lots of testing, they have bent that curve, so they are now down to somewhere around 10 to 20 cases a day from the peak of when they were right at the top of about 4,000 cases a day, and that clearly represented undercounting as well. But they have been successful in bending that curve. You can see South Korea was on the same trajectory as the United States in the sort of light blue. They have done very extensive testing, and as we saw before, they have been testing at over 1,000 times what we are doing. So they've been finding cases and getting people to basically hunker down at home, so they aren't transmitting to other people, and they have been successful in basically getting to very few numbers of new cases. Japan as well has had a slower rise, but it's been fairly consistent. They have more focused on isolating the higher-risk elderly population. Singapore and Hong Kong, but you can see Italy is now starting to bend their curve as they've implemented more severe restrictions on travel, business activity, schools, et cetera, just in the last, less than two weeks. And because of this delay of five to six days from getting exposed to disease and then potentially transmitting, you won't see much of a change in any of these curves until it's been at least, generally about two weeks, and by a month, you should clearly know if it's working or not. So you can see most of the other countries up there have a lot of work to do. Now, we have just done a whole bunch of things in the last week, but we can still expect because of low testing, as we test more people, our total number is going to go up. Now, more severe outcomes like hospitalizations or deaths are going to continue to potentially double every week or less, or at least the next week or two, but what we're doing, working with severe social distancing and closing businesses and increasing testing, we should start to see at least drops in that, but it's going to be compensated as we test less people, we're going to find a lot more disease, because for everybody who dies in the United States, you know, there is probably, if we're at about a 1% mortality rate, there are probably 100 people in the community with disease, you know, and maybe 10 to 20 of those have been through the healthcare system as well. So we've got a lot of catch-up to do, and this is, I think, the most important thing. I want to show you that, where we are and what we potentially are looking at in the next two to four to six weeks and even months out. There's a lot of great information, and I certainly encourage you to look at the CDC website. The LA County website also has a lot of good things, particularly for community members, businesses, all sorts of little things with checklists that are very useful resources moving forward. resources moving forward. I'll be glad to take any other questions or comments, given that sobering information.
I guess the one question that I would have, um, on the slide where it had the multiple different diseases, um, it.
This one?
No, the one that had MERS and SARS on it.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you. The, because a couple of things that you said were kind of, didn't stump me, but they were really startling. I mean, SARS and MERS both look like they're much more potent.
Right, they are, so.
But, but, but it seems to me that the reason that the coronavirus has been a pandemic that has really dwarfed those others is because it doesn't reveal itself.
Right, exactly.
Anything other than bronchitis or a chest cold.
Right, or even less.
Right, and that's the deceiving part. So we shouldn't, we shouldn't, or I guess another way to say it is, we need to learn the new sense that says, look, if I've got a cold or a chest cold, I need to be careful with that.
Right.
Because it may not seem like it's very much, but it is indeed every bit and then some from a contagion perspective.
Right.
Because I, because I may be out there a week and not knowing that I'm sick and just making a lot of people ill.
Right, and that's part of the problem. And clearly, there are very mildly symptomatic or potentially asymptomatic cases spreading the disease in the community when we have free interaction between people. So, you know, and obviously, the most vulnerable in the community are dependent on us to protect them by, until now, staying home if you are sick. And clearly, part of our culture is you go to work.
Right.
Unless, you know, you literally can't get out of bed versus with this disease, it's revealed the problem with that kind of ethos, that we potentially give it to healthy coworkers, but they give it to our grandparents or parents or other people with serious illness. They pay the price. And clearly, the nursing home facilities are extremely high-risk facilities. Uh, so it's in this, you know, with MERS and SARS, you notice when ten or twenty percent of people with the disease are dying, and particularly if the incubation period is shorter, you can recognize, I was with Dan with a cough two days ago, and now I'm going to the ER because I can't breathe versus if you saw me at a restaurant ten days ago, you aren't going to connect, and I may not have symptoms yet. And that's the problem with this disease. It sort of lulls us into a false sense of security, and we don't notice it circulating, just like we saw in China, until people start getting very sick. And in the middle of a flu season or a cold season in the winter, you just say, oh, okay, they got unlucky. They had a bad cold that turned into a bad pneumonia. Uh, and we don't test for a lot of other viruses. This is going to sort of change that as well, but we'll be looking more for other viral diseases besides influenza also.
So social distancing is, is the way to go. So.
Yeah.
If I'm not feeling great in the morning, I need to say buck up and be responsible.
Right.
Maintain that social distance.
Right, and where we are right now.
Rather than saying buck up and get to the office and.
Right.
And go do those twenty-seven things around to do this.
So, a lot of what you're seeing now coming out from the state and city and county and increasingly at the national level is unless you really know what need to go in because you're a fireman, uh, you're a policeman, essential activities, try and do it through electronic communication, do it from home, uh, and plan to be there for at least several weeks. I think almost certainly this is going to be weeks to months before we really drop down, because we've lost a month and a half or so.
Right.
Of sort of incubation below the radar, and now the numbers have finally reached that very steep part of the curve where they're going to become very obvious very quickly uh, to almost anybody. And that's why you're seeing, when you look at the California or LA County numbers or US numbers, they're doubling almost every day now. Now, some of that is increased testing, but a lot of it is there are not just enough cases on the steep part of that curve that they're going to go up very quickly. And as well, the deaths are doubling, almost every day. And also because there's this one to two or three-week lag between death and prior disease, the deaths rate sort of reflects what was going on at potentially a one or two percent level, one to three weeks ago.
Staying home is the answer.
Right, and good hand hygiene. And unfortunately, it's, it's going to be very difficult, particularly for small businesses, but even large businesses, as far as people still want to get paid and those that depend on me going to a restaurant over here Friday night, uh, that's going to be a severe impact. And, you know, I saw it driving down D Street getting here.
Yeah.
Uh, that is pretty quiet compared to most nights.
Now, we, we just talked a few minutes ago regarding the test kits. Do you see, I know that they brought Quest on this just recently. It seemed like Quest was brought on. They have quite a few test labs.
Right.
Do you see that this loosening up a bit? Because I know the federal government is trying to push these, the CDC is trying to push these.
Yeah.
And then also to get these tests, and to test these people so that we can find out if or not they have it, because like you say, we're on a steep curve now.
Right.
Do you see that loosening up a bit?
Yeah, I mean, clearly going from twenty to sixty, I was overjoyed this morning when we got that number. And I think more so, not so much that sixty is what we need, but if it's a hundred next week, we're sort of getting there. And obviously, as we gain more experience at the hospital, and this will become the predominant condition we're taking care of in the next several weeks to a month, anybody coming in with a bit of fever and a cough, we're just trying to figure out, are you sick enough to be in the hospital? Do we have enough tests at that time to certainly test everybody coming in the hospital, because it has to do with also, you know, can we put this patient near somebody else? And as far as the hospital preparation, tons of planning, and we spend six hours every day in various meetings between radiology, emergency room, nursing, financial, how many masks we have, how many gums we have, how many goggles we have, do we need to cancel elective surgeries? Uh, because particularly if, we don't want eighty-year-olds coming in for elective surgery when everybody else on the hall has this disease, even if we're doing the best infection control. Uh, you know, so there's a lot of logistic issues. Uh, we've had some very good responses, and we've had good relations with sort of the emergency supplies for just this sort of event. Uh, but when we look at how many masks we can potentially go through on a daily basis, it's very sobering, uh, in trying to really shepherd those scarce resources as we move forward. Uh, we met with Representative Torres this morning over at the hospital, and she certainly was very receptive to the problem we're in, and both on the individuals in the community, both their health as well as their financial well-being, being able to feed their families and have a roof over their head. She's got a pretty good eye on that's going to be a problem, and trying to work on that side of the issue as well as we move forward.
So follow the quarantine?
Yeah, I can't emphasize. And, you know, from the point of view of a healthcare provider, and we look back to the generation that won World War II, you know, and a twenty-year-old in Iowa helped save my life in a sense, and for all of us, by doing what they did. And now, everybody in our community, particularly the ill and elderly, are dependent on us doing the right thing to protect them. Uh, so it's up to us to do the right thing, not only for ourselves and our own families, but for the whole community and vice versa. And that's our challenge.
Well, thank you, doctor. I think, can we, any other questions?
No, I just want to thank you for all that you're doing, because it's the medical staff too that we're concerned for.
Yeah.
You know, you're with them every day. Our police are fired. You know, they're putting their lives on the line too, to make sure people are taken care of. So thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you. And thank you, Lee, for being a part of this and bringing it back. We appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Thank you. It'll take a minute just to, the doctor and Lee.
Thanks from here. Would you like me to take a moment now to give you a little bit of what the city is doing? I won't get into too much of the weeds, but, you know, certainly I think this is an appropriate opportunity. As was indicated here, we are certainly in a moment of constant change. Um, and so the target is continually moving for us. Um, we continue to monitor the situation and try and be aware of all the updates that are coming, and encourage everybody to continue to look at our website, our Facebook, and our other media outlets, where we're going to be putting information. Um, so we should be updating, try to update at least once a day with the changes. And for example, this afternoon, another county order came out from county public health restricting groups to fifty or less. And so that was one of the reasons we did the ask for this meeting, although it's considered unlawful, as well as restricting restaurants. You know, it was communicated by the governor yesterday, but today it became a county order that restaurants cannot do in dining seating. They can only do for, to go or drive through. So that's something that will be coming, uh, tomorrow. We'll be sharing with the businesses and they'll be moving forward with that. Um, we have been meeting as a staff with our management team to evaluate what city resources are and our level of response. And we will be meeting daily. We want to let the community know that, that we're going to be looking at how we need to redirect our efforts as this continues to move and more events unfold. I can tell you that our current calls for service, um, remain at normal levels, which is a good thing as it relates to police and fire. The only thing that is a little difficult is the wait times that exist at the ER rooms are longer because our staff is having to be tied up as it relates to before they can release the patient to the hospital. And that's just indicative of how busy they are. Um, our attention will be focused on what I believe are four important areas. It's how we respond to the community's changing needs in this time, and they will be significantly changing. Um, the protection of our city staff, and what things we can do to employ measures to help ensure that they are not becoming infected as they continue to provide services to the community. How to minimize the effect on the existing services that we provide, as well as then how we communicate all these things to staff and to the community. So that's kind of the focus that we'll be taking. And then beyond that will be the recovery and how we look to reinstitute normalcy when that time comes. But that's down the road. But those are, I think, the first four areas that we want to focus. Um, as we shift our attention though, I know that it's going to be difficult for us to, to complete the business as usual that we are led to have. Um, so I just ask for the council and the community's understanding, as we focus our attention, we may not meet the deadlines or some of the timings that we have set, and we may be back to you to see about pushing some of those more optional things off as we move forward. Um, we essentially have closed all city facilities with the exception of the restrooms in the parks, as well as city hall at this point. We recognize that some things do require in-person, but we're trying to minimize that as, as much as possible. We are reviewing that and looking at what some other cities are doing. And if we can try and eliminate and come up with workarounds on how to do those things remotely, we may choose to close city hall in the next couple of days to further advance that restriction. Um, we'll also be exploring ways to provide assistance to the, um, the governor's self-isolation group, which are our seniors. We know we have a very large senior population. We don't have any plans in place at this point, but we have some ideas. We talked about it briefly today with the management team, but we'll be coming back hopefully in the next week or so, which will bring out some ways we can be of assistance to them to determine their needs as they're in self-isolization. Um, and we would just encourage everyone to continue with patience, calmness, and care for our neighbors as we try and work through the next several weeks or months as it comes out.
Thank you. Okay, we will move to item six. That's consent count. And motion please.
Actually, we have a request to pull an item, and it's item six A, which are the minutes. And just to keep in mind, I, we did put out the ask to the public that if they weren't, they could not come to the meeting but would provide us with their comments, we would share them for the record. So I'll be doing a lot of talking tonight. I'm sorry.
Just don't cough.
Yeah, okay, thanks. Um, so we did have a request by Rick Bowen to pull the minutes. Um, and his comment is, based on the Facebook, oh, uh, I'm asking the minutes of the twenty-first be pulled from consent. As in past, there seems to be an omission and mischaracterization of statements. In the past, I have requested, along with many other, many others, that the minutes reflect the actual events and statements made. I ask the city to review the video and make the appropriate actions. When glaring omission is not closely written, Robin Carter is calling Danny Montoya a liar from her council seat as a courtesy item. So, uh, I hope people listening will respond to this, man. So, that is the comment that's made. Um, and so I know there was an ask to have the item pulled for discussion. So I would just point out for the sake of the council, we do not do verbatim minutes. We do not do what would be transcriptions. Uh, we have actually moved to even more of an action item minutes, because we do have the video archive that speaks for itself as to what actually occurred. So the meeting is, the minutes are to give the essence of the meeting and what was generally said and nothing else.
Okay, let's, uh, other than six A, and then a motion.
So move.
Second.
I need, one more time. There we go. Go ahead. There we go.
Going back to six A, any further discussion?
No, it was just Bob and I discussed this with Bob regarding the brevity of it. So he explained it to him, and I think that's, as long as we're at brevity and we don't go into discussion on, you know, lengthy discussions on it, it's just a short version. If they want to go back to the, to the, to the videos, fine. I just, it was brought up, and that's, we, Bob and I discussed it. As long as we keep consistent.
And, right, I'd go even a little bit further. That is that if, if indeed that the level of minutes that are, even at this brief level are an issue, I would want to make a motion that we, we contemplate just action minutes, which are simply the items and the vote, and nothing beyond that. But, um, I don't mind the brevity that we have right now, but I wouldn't want us to have to duplicate what's, what's in the video.
And I, I, I would agree with that. The thing is, is that if you didn't do that, we do it, as you say, because if you're going to explain a little bit of one and on another, you need to be consistent. So I do agree with that. So consistency, and if it's brevity, that's fine, you know, as long as you do one or the other. I do agree.
Just a second. My apologies. Um, my apologies. There was an item that you approved that we need to rescind, because it was supposed to be pulled. Um, it was item five, uh, three, which is resolution twenty-four.
Six three.
I'm sorry.
Sixteen three?
Yes, thank you.
Four of contract.
Sixteen three.
Oh, it didn't happen?
We need to go back, and we're in contact with the lowest bidder, I think.
But it's not done yet.
Yes, so we just need to pull that and rescind that vote on that item. We were supposed to pull it earlier. I apologize.
Can we, can we, okay, six A, can we rescind six E three at the same time, or do you need separate?
That's fine.
Okay, can we have a motion of, of that?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that motion.
Seconding the motion to rescind six E three and approve, uh.
Six eight.
Six eight as written.
As written. Vote please. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to make sure I was.
It's easier. Thank you, Dan. Okay, let's move to item seven, under other matters, mid-year financial report.
Then we'll be giving that report.
Mayor, council members, um, you have the future report, part of your, or the period of activity ended December thirty-first, two thousand nineteen. Also refer in this to action three, four, two, the end of twenty budget. Um, since there's significant detail in the report, kind of outlines everything, um, at a very brand new level, I just want to go through, um, some of the significant items, and then we can circle back to questions, and I can elaborate on the details that you need to bring in collaboration on. Um, there were, I did make sure there were two unexpected changes that are kind of behind the numbers, so to speak, causing quite a bit of moving, moving pieces here. Um, the biggest one was there was a university, a housing project with the university that ended up not going. Um, that roughly represented, and that impacted nine hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars in revenue that was expected to come in from those planning fees and other development fees related to it. come in from those planning fees and other development fee related to it that ended up not going through. So that was apparently the most significant item in the background there. The other part is fire operations. There were certain vacant positions, and then there was some, and related overtime differential between those. And then some of the ambulance services changes that have come into play. The good news on that is that this, a lot of it was, we were able to offset different departments identified savings, was obviously able to offset a good portion of it. The other was sales taxes. We did adjust upward. The revisions to that were largely due to the changes in the reporting for online retailers such as Amazon, where there was the way fair decision that the state adopted. So anyway, we did revise that up. So those two offset it to where the overall, the net effect was $247,000 in additional fund balances are being used. Of that $180,000 was due to fire, fire over time, fire entry over time related issues. So the kind of big picture, that's what we ended up. Otherwise, the department's activities at mid-year are in line outside of those parameters, are in line with what was expected and what they should be with the budget, as you can see from the expenditure report. That, the other thing that is kind of new on this report, and you want to walk through it a little bit because they are new, and this is, this is kind of a point at which you should be made aware of them. There were four significant accounting changes that are underlying this and reflected here, but will be reflected going forward also, so I can more consider briefly. The debt service fund, the city has a debt service fund. It was, it's, the debt service fund is designed to keep track of all the different debt activities of the city. But in this case, we were using it for one debt issue, the 2018 pension officer bonds. It really was defeating its own purpose by just creating a fund just to basically show two payments. So we're, after discussing with the auditors and while this is going on, we're just going to pull it into the general fund. So you won't see a debt service fund, but you will see the principal entry payments in the general fund for the 2018 pension officer bonds. The other, other accounting change that triggered your attention is the Miramar Debt Repayment Fund. That was years ago when the Free Valleys Water Treatment Plant was put into place. This was established for the revenue bonds, or the lease revenue bonds at the time. And the fund would normally in 2015, it would be off. So normally the fund would have been closed out in 2015. However, it was maintained with funds in it due to the fact that there were, according to the agreement with Free Valleys, there were potential maintenance costs that could either be directly pushed back to the city as a separate bill, or could be pushed into the water rates of the ratepayers. What ended up happening is that fund continued to collect funds from the ratepayers. So in the general operation funds, the water rate wasn't, the water was more expensive to the ratepayers. At the same time, the fees offset that were in this Miramar Debt Service Fund. So what we did this year is basically rearrange that so that the funds go with, the actual funds go where the costs have been accumulated over time. So that's essentially what happened. So you won't see that 519 Miramar Debt Service Fund on the reporting anymore. The funds in that are reflected in the water operations and the capital, or capital improvement funds, respective of their original purpose. So the other, another small change that's happening is a matter of, right now, fund 407 is the Information Services, IT Services Fund. That fund is a capital projects fund currently. We did purchase a couple of copier and printers. Doing a cost, a lease versus buy analysis, it was more advantageous to supply that equipment. So those, that equipment is going to be reflected in that fund now. However, the type of fund that it was, was not consistent with that type of accounting activity. So simply all that we're planning on doing is renumbering 407 to six, to six. So that'll be, it's the type of fund, we want to keep it in the sequence, like they put it in front of six two four, and so, so it's just a rearrangement. But you'll see a six two six now, but it's the same as 407. Fund balance is moving, not creating any fund, but simply different presentation of it. And the final, the final item I'm here to note is fire facility fee, fund 244. It was, those fees were collected mostly for Fire Station Three in the Hillside Overlay area. In the past, one thing that we did purchase in there was an ambulance last year, and this year we have a fire engine that was appropriated out of 250, which is another, another less restrictive fire-related fund. We're simply asking in here in the approval that we reallocate those from 244, the same funds toward the fire engine, because they're more restrictive and appropriate toward that purchase. Simply asking that we simply move the transfer from where it was previously to these funds. As far as, that was what I had kind of noted as issues that I wanted to be aware of and to call out on that, but obviously there are quite a lot of details. So any questions or specifics that you wanted to talk about?
No, I called and you answered all my questions. Thank you. But I'm impressed. You were just shooting off these numbers for a one number. It's like, oh my gosh, how do you keep all this straight?
That is our city manager.
Nathan, looks like our asset forfeiture has gotten up there a bit. Is that correct?
Asset forfeiture has, but it largely pertains to L.A. impacts.
Oh, is that asset forfeiture?
Exactly. Yeah, the city's asset forfeiture is not up there.
Yeah.
Actually, big wishes.
I'm just kidding. I like those numbers. They go, hmm.
More toys. More toys.
A lot of people wish.
Any, any more questions of Nathan?
I just want to comment, I, you know, when I first got on council, I mean, this was not quite as organized as this, and it really helps to see where the funds are and also where the dollars are being spent, and you're organizing to put it where we can, you know, most people can understand this. And the fact that, to let us know where we're at, which is very important. I mean, we're heading in some rough territory here, especially with permits and stuff and some of these businesses, plus with what's going on right now, this is going to affect us tremendously, and we need to keep close eye on this. So thank you very much.
Well, you're right, Tim, because over the years, it's been 11 years that I've been on here, that at first it was very complicated. We kept asking for it to be simplified. It is so detailed now. We just had our audit report, a couple, what, last month, sometime we had him come and speak. Nathan's done a wonderful job. You have made this very simple for, you know, the layman to understand what we're reading. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Although sometimes we look at it now and you go, oh, man.
Well, that's where we call up.
Oh, man, Nathan, stop giving us these numbers. You see the rates and you see what's going on, so, but no, I agree. Thank you.
And of course, if there's ever anything to do that'll make it easier for you, let us know also.
Thank you, Nathan. Very much. Thank you. Any comments? Go ahead. If there's anybody in the audience, we will open it up for comments from the public. So if anybody has a desire to talk on this subject, please come to the podium.
Anybody that emailed a minute? No email comments?
Okay. This is public comments?
No, 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 that's on the, that's on that.
Comments on the budget.
Okay. Unless you have money, of course.
Okay. So any other comments?
I, I guess I just want to say that, that I think, I agree. I've only been on council for three years, but I think Nathan's done a great job organizing the accounts. I always like, I always hear that Boya commercial in the back of my head with orange dollars and then fidelity with green dollars. And so I, I, and it's fun to see how those dollars that are more restrictive, we want to make sure we're using, fully utilizing those and not always pulling out of the general fund. So, so thank you, Nathan. I get to, I get to see dancing money and colors when I hear you speak, so I appreciate it.
I'm completely sober. I'm an applied mathematician and speaks that way.
Okay, so the recommendation is the city council should approve the budget amendments. Do you have a motion on that?
I'll move that we approve the, the mid-year budget.
Second. Vote please.
Thank you.
Before you move on, after all those compliments for Nathan, I think, and I told him I would make this hard on him, so.
Good.
Doing what I have planned for. Nathan's been with us two years now, if you can take?
A little over three.
Yeah, and he's been, as council assured, it's been incredible having. Unfortunately, he is sadly, shared with us, he's going to be taking another job in another agency to the east of here. Certainly have enjoyed working with him. He's made some really incredible changes within the ease at which our budget reads and the funds as well. So I wanted to publicly thank him for the work he's, he's done over the last couple of years and will truly be missed. So thank you.
I just spent a week out there. You all like it.
Would have been a standing ovation had you decided to stay.
That's right. Okay, let's move on to item B. And that is request for termination of resolutions 1851 and 52. And that is, they're requested by council members, Mayor Davis and Robert Carter.
Thank you, Mayor.
You too.
Okay. Tonight I'm speaking in support of resolution number 2016, a resolution to terminate resolutions numbers 1851 and 1852. Resolutions 1851 and 1852 created two council committees, each committee having two council members who provided advice and direction only. These committees serve the city's purposes regarding negotiating with our city labor groups and regarding litigation involving the city. The committee structures have been important and necessary tools of this current council to address complicated issues. Now that the litigation is resolved and the majority of the labor groups have negotiated agreements, this council has an opportunity to move forward and provide a clear unified path for the new council that will soon be seated. Our work together is not yet done. I feel that resolution 2016 is a positive action in support of our incoming council. Approving resolution 2016 will not take away any power or authority from the new council. Instead, approving resolution 2016 will provide a strong foundation which will foster collaboration within the new council. I invite the council to consider and support this resolution.
Yes, Mayor and I talked about this, rather to wait for the new council to be seated or for us to take this action. And we feel that with, especially with what's going on in our community, the coronavirus and moving forward, we need to bring our community together, and that's up to us. I've heard that from the two new council members, that they look forward to bringing this community together, and we need to be focused that way. So I agree with this new resolution and moving us forward. We have been very fortunate, every elected official in whether it's school district, councils, government agencies, to have the privilege to have confidentiality in meetings to protect our employees and also to protect litigation for the community, the citizens at large. We're there to protect you and to do what's best. You've elected us to make these decisions, and that is what I take very strongly, that it's important that we move this city forward, and I would support this idea.
Well, I, okay, so I'm making the motion that we approve resolution 2016.
There's a question.
Well, there's no question. I have several comments that were asked of the public, so I don't know if you want to do that before the motion or just?
Let's go ahead and open that up.
Yep. So, carry with me. First is from Anna Anderson. I am in favor of terminating the resolutions and making sure they never happen again. We vote in all council members, and I believe that all council members should be involved in all aspects of what is going on in our city, discuss all matters together, and then vote altogether in what needs to be done or not done in regards to our city business. The next is from Debbie Ford. Hello, Mayor Kendrick, and council members. I am in strong support of resolution 2016. With new leadership impending for our city, it is time to renew, rebuild, and embrace our city with fresh eyes and excitement. We will love this beautiful city, and it's time, we all, we all love this beautiful city, and it's time we all act according and operate Laverne with one unified leadership team. By voting in support of 2016, each of you as a, as a representative of our city has an opportunity to step up and show us citizens that you care for Laverne and are ready to move forward in a positive way. We choose you as leaders for your city because we trusted your motives and felt you had all citizens' best interest in mind as you made decisions affecting our city. To ensure you, we continue in this manner, we need the mayor and all council members as a team making decisions that affect our city. I am urging you to make the right decision for Laverne and terminate the resolutions. Louis Joe Wettin, I strongly support termination of resolutions 1851 and 1852. Suzie Morales, the resolution should be terminated, and the whole council get back to addressing litigation and contract negotiations as a whole unit elected by residents, no committees breaking it up. Kathy Newlin, my name is Kathy Newlin, resident of Laverne. I would like to request the termination of resolutions 1851 and 1852. I want the return of input of all five council members in the decision that are made. This is what we, the people of Laverne, voted into office, and this should be reserved. Marlene Carney, I support the termination of resolutions 1851 and 52. The new mayor and city council should start with a fresh page. I'm not diminishing the seriousness of the past issues or decisions that were made in the past, but I feel it is time for the council to move forward in a positive manner as a strong and cohesive team and continue the process of making Laverne the best city it can be. Lastly, I have Pam Berry. I am sending this comment in favor of the termination of resolutions 1851 and 52. Our council has been divided and functioning with only pockets of discussion and voting on incomplete information since these resolutions took effect. Because the committee's discussion only has the input in ears of two of the five elected officials on litigation and contract negotiations, our city is negatively impacted and residents are tired of the division, and it's time to move forward with our newly elected council and mayor fully engaged as one unit for the betterment of our city, Laverne. Please vote in favor of terminating these resolutions and allow the city council of five to address these important issues as speed.
Okay, we'll open it up to the public. If anybody would like to address this issue, please come to the podium. Okay. There's no further discussion if we can.
Give me a second.
Right, yeah, and I'll make the second.
So it's been moved in, so he said he needed a second, not a second to speak, but a second to the motion. So I totally get it. Because, because.
A second, so a second.
I'll just vote. I'm not going to provide more commentary over, over this resolution.
I'd like to agree with Orange.
Well, yeah. I just, I guess the only comment I'll make is, as soon as some members of our community saw the resolution that was being proposed by me and Robin, I didn't get a universal or a homogeneous feedback. I got feedback from various perspectives.
Vote please. I will be abstained. Okay, we will go to item A, which is an emergency resolution. Right?
First of all, we have before you on the dais a resolution that we want to add to this agenda. It is not part of the published agenda, so the council needs to amend the agenda to include resolution 2017, which declares a local emergency due to the coronavirus.
I'll move that we amend the agenda with resolution 2017.
Second. Vote please. Now it's on the agenda for your consideration.
And I will just provide a brief to the council. You received the, the presentation from the men of the record, as well as what I shared with you. One of the normal courses of action at this stage when we're dealing with this level of an incident, typically we would look at these when responding to an earthquake, a major natural disaster, but certainly the level of impact that this is having, not just in our community, but across. To declare a local emergency does enact certain flexibility of powers, also puts us in access for resources through the county and state, as well as then the opportunity to get reimbursement for some of the expenses that we would experience as a result of this. So we are doing this as part of good course for the community going forward, and I'm just asking for your support of adopting this, this resolution declaring a local emergency. and I'm just asking for your support of adopting this, this resolution declaring a local emergency.
No questions for me?
Okay. I'll make the motion.
Second. Vote. Thank you. Thank you, Bob. Thank you, Bob. Moving to item A, public comment. Now's the time that anything that's not on the agenda, and Tim, come on up. Not cold enough for long pant-chesters.
No, not... Tim Hirsch, Sierra Way in Laverne. I, I'll be brief, but I want to express my complete and utter appreciation for Don Kendrick's service to the community. I've lived in Laverne almost 70 years. I knew his predecessors, and they hold him in high regard. But I want to emphasize that as a friend and as an observer, Don has been of an unequal service to this community. I appreciate it. I appreciate him, and I wish him all the best. Thank you, Don.
Thank you, Tim. Anybody else would like to speak? Gary.
If you've been here a while, you know everybody's first name.
I want to congratulate you on the mayor. But I'm really concerned about the paramedics and firefighters. I want them to be kept here. Those outside stores will go under the cannon. They've helped me, my wife, a lot of others, to the best of the best. I don't want to see that every year. I'm leaving it up to you to keep us informed what's going on to hear news on here.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak in their public comment?
Okay. I do have some speaker cards. I just wanted to see if there was anybody from the audience first before I go into this. That's okay. And it's kind of different, so there are three. One is from Rick Bowen. If not today, when will the large Kendrick sign be revoked from the corner of Wheeler and Footwell? Why do minutes continue to be inaccurate? Video, there's four review minutes are written, record of proceedings. What is procedure if he signs off on final minutes? When will the city announce election results, not just refer to LA vote? And when will the new council be installed? I will try and answer a couple of those questions. The minutes, I think we did talk about that, so I won't spend any time on that. Election results, we actually have been pushing it to the county. Frankly, we are short in our IT department at this point, so we're making, taking advantage. We're putting, directing people through our website to be able to pull it. We're just simply not reporting anything additional. The information is...
They're closed today.
Yeah.
They've been closed, so...
And then the new council, so the new council will be installed at the next meeting. So that'll be your April 6th meeting. And that's because we have to wait for certification from the county, and that will not happen until March 27th. So that makes that next opportunity our next council meeting. Now, I will share for the benefit of the group right now, we will probably be in the same level of restrictions that exist now. So one thing I need to talk to the new seated council about is just doing a very basic swearing-in at this meeting and then having a reception maybe at a later date when things get back to a little bit more normalized, but we'll have to talk more about that. But that's the comments on that one. The next one is from Marlene Carney. Although official election results are not completely finalized, I wanted to take an opportunity to congratulate Mayor-elect Tim Hepburn and the two council members, Wendy Lau and Rick Crosby. I also want to take this opportunity to congratulate all the candidates for their willingness to run for local office. They are all winners given the challenges one faces when running a campaign. I want to extend a thank you to our, to council member Charlie Rosales for his service to the city of Laverne. Many good things have happened in Laverne because of your dedication, mindfulness, and actions. And finally, I want to extend a thank you to Mayor Don Kendrick for his many years of service as a council member and mayor of Laverne. You have been dedicated in your efforts to make Laverne the fine city that it is. In conversations we have had, it is clear that you love the city and have always made thoughtful decisions regarding the city. I hope that you will continue to stay involved in city activities and volunteer commitments. It is individuals like you that make, that make a great city, make for a great city, and you should feel proud of all you have done to contribute to that. I wish you success in all that you choose to do. Marlene Carney. And then the last one is from Kathy Kaluzic. I really wanted to be there to stand person, but I just wanted to take a moment to express my deep gratitude for all that Mayor Kendrick has done for our city in his 23-plus years of service to us. His presence at the council will surely be missed. He is, as he always went over and above the call of duty for our great city. Thank you.
We'll move to item nine. Tim?
Well, I want to also say that I have learned from some of our, with Mr. Kendrick up here and also Mr. Rosales and my other council members, and I do look forward to the upcoming council. And congratulations to Mr. Crosby and Ms. Lau. And we're, right now, we're really faced with some serious stuff. And I, as it's morphing every day, as we just heard from the people from Manta Valley, I think we need to just continually do what we're doing, keeping our distance, making sure that we isolate a bit. But also, we need to make sure that we protect our first responders and all of our employees. So, and Bob, you've been doing that, thank you. But our police and fire that are out there in the midst of all this to, to take extra precautions. But also our restaurants and all of our businesses, please, please continually to service and, and shop locally. You have to order out, order out. Obviously, there's no dining, but order out. Gas stations, I mean, we've got to continually do that, but we have to be very cautious in how we do it and keep our distance, but watch our kids. And the biggest thing that I know that Bob's going to be working on this is my biggest concern is our mobile home communities, although they, they have good management in place. They know all of their residents that have needs or, or things like that. But we need to really watch our neighbors, and that goes for every single neighborhood. One thing I learned on campaigning is a lot of these communities, they were kind of splintered. And with this election, I know there was a lot of dissension and stuff going on, but I think the communities really grew together, and it's very important to keep that. You don't have to go and in their house, but check on them. Make sure that they've gotten the foods. Make sure, if you've got extra, sure. I know there's been a lot of hoarding and stuff going on. I understand. I do understand the pandemic. I understand that you want to hunker down, but we've got to take care of each other. We're a great city, a bunch of great residents here. We really need to watch after each other. So it's very, very important just to keep an eye on everybody and make sure you use this all the time. Every day, keep in your car, wash your hands, and make sure that you protect yourselves, but also look after our neighbors. Thank you.
A couple of things. One is, and I totally concur with, with council member Hepburn. Now's the time to be good neighbors to each other. Don't be relying on the fire department, don't be relying on the police department to take care of the issue when it's finally elevated to their need. Retap to your neighbors and be their neighbor. Make sure they're okay. And if they need help, help them get that help sooner than later. Another piece is, in Edison bills, it was coming out recently, and I think it was also in other mailers, information about the census upcoming. Don't let this pandemic stop you from being counted, and make sure all your neighbors are counted too. So we want active participation in our census this year. And finally, I want to thank the outgoing Mayor Don Kendrick for all the leadership and the valuable lessons he can have made, as well as thanking outgoing member Charlie Rosales for his leadership. I've learned that there are a lot of complicated decisions that need to be made, and there are no simple solutions to choose from. And our community, like many communities, required a lot of listening to residents and their concerns and considering short and long-term impacts, and leading by making those decisions thoughtfully, rigorously, and unwaveringly. And I've been blessed to have both you and Charlie mentor and share that with me, so thank you. I'm going to welcome the new council as its fitted next time.
Rob?
I'd like to first start off by thanking you, Don, for your leadership over these new seven years. And we've developed a good friendship, and that will continue. So thank you. Rick, Crosby's in the back of the room, Wendy, both of you. I welcome you to the council up here with us, and I look forward to working with you. And I think you'll be a great addition. Tim, congratulations. And we're going to move this city forward with working together and taking the citizens' concerns at heart. What I wanted to let you know too is because right now with what's going on with this coronavirus, I, all of my meetings have been canceled, so I have a lot of free time. So I decided over the weekend, well, I do, and I can't sit still. Ask my husband. So, you know, I just started thinking, what can we do to help one another? To me, kindness is the greatest thing. I have a sister that has Alzheimer's, and I take care of her. She still lives in the mobile home park, but I was over there today, and I was helping her with her census. And truly, the census took no more than seven minutes. So take the time to do it, and that's with her sitting there and me telling her what to answer. So just take the time to get that done. But while I was in the park, I decided to start checking with the management company. So that's what I'm going to do this week to see what we can do. I put out on Facebook yesterday just a question to people. What can we do to help people? What are people looking for that we can do without, you know, jeopardizing, you know, that closeness and relationships? But I got some wonderful responses back. And one that I want to recognize is Lincoln Dial, who is over at Cavalry Baptist Church. He put out there that he has volunteers at his church, and even the students there right now, since they have the time, they want to help. If we can find senior citizens or, and people that really need some kind of help, whether it's taking care of their yard work or doing little things. He said, "Do you go check with them? Let me know." I mean, that just warmed my heart, just hearing that. That's our community. And so let's try to keep that going. The one thing I started yesterday with my neighborhood, we have 33 homes that were built in our development, so we're very close. But I wrote out to all of them, just one little thing is just check with your neighbor to the left and, left and right of you, and just see how they're doing. So I reached out to both of them yesterday, and I gave them that responsibility to check with the people next to them. And we're going to do that, you know, twice a week. And we also told them, "If you need something, you have to ask us." And so, you know, just be kind to people. Don't be panicked about anything. As you heard, the grocery stores are going to be open. They're, you know, it's just a madhouse there, but let's just get what we need, go home. We're here in the city, working hard. We obviously came out tonight because these are our responsibilities. And so we care about this community, and we're going to get back what we had, and it's going to be even better. And do support the businesses and let them know that you're, you know, especially when they open up again, let's, you know, dine out. Everyone's going to be dying to dine out at that point. But, you know, we're here for you. We're Laverne, and so remember that. This is what we always have been. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. First of all, thank you very much for the kind comments that I've received. We're going to close the meeting tonight on a very significant note, and that is the adjournment for probably a bigger-than-life police officer in our community, John Hackworth, who passed away on February 20th. And when I say larger-than-life, he was a big guy, but he lived big. And there wasn't anybody in this town that didn't come in contact with John Hackworth that they didn't remember coming in contact with John Hackworth. He retired early from this as a police lieutenant. Certainly a great leader in, in the police department, a great mentor. To, to reach that in 20 years, and unfortunately was medically retired, but in 20 years, he probably did more for our police department and our community than most officers do in 30 or more years. So we are going to adjourn our meeting tonight in John's honor. Also, he spent eight years as a, as a planning commission, a planning commission. And the last part of that was, was as the chair of our city attorney studies. I've never seen anybody run a meeting better than Hackworth. It was one that since then that has, but those are huge compliments coming from somebody that has not only attended meetings in this city for over 25 years, but also Rosemead and St. Garyville for equal amounts of time. And he paid the ultimate compliment for John Hackworth. So that, those are huge, huge shoes to fill. Also, he loved his Celtic background. You could see him many times over at Coons Park in his, I don't know what he, it wasn't a kiln, but it was something that was weird looking to me. But John was there, and then his wife was there, and they had swords, and they did all kinds. And I never slived in a sword fight, but I would imagine he won just about every one that he ever did. Big, big guys. He leaves his wife Linda, who he called Peachy, and his daughter, and then a, just a huge part of his life was, was a grandson. So I know that this city is going to miss John for a long time. So we are adjourning our meeting in his honor. Our next scheduled meeting is April 6th at 6:30 in these chambers.
Did you go to the wedding?
Yeah.